I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. I need a mover and a seconder to Leanne and Gail, all in favor, carried. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Any questions on it? Resolution four, five, three, be resolved that the meeting agenda for the regular council meeting of December third, two thousand twenty-four be accepted as presented. Mover and seconder, Gary and Derek, all in favor, carried. Number three, approval of previous meeting minutes for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. All is good. I'll read the resolution, four, five, four, be it resolved that the meeting in minutes of the regular council meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four be accepted as presented. Mover and seconder, Ken seconded by Gary, all in favor, carried. No delegations. Number five, protective services. Nothing on that either, correct? Number seven, finance, seven point one, general sundry approval items. Any questions on that?
Just the one, the one check, the four, four, two, when I did the review, we're just gonna remove that one until we get more information, is that correct?
Yeah.
Resolution's updated.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now I'll read the resolution, four, five, five, be it resolved that the council payable checks thirteen, four, twenty-nine to thirteen, four, sixty-six in the amount of hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, but excluding check one, three, four, four, two, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents, be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and seconder, Gary, seconded by Leanne, all in favor, carried. Seven point one, point two, payroll. Pay period, November sixteenth to the twenty-ninth. Are there any questions on the payroll, chief? Then I'll read the resolution, four, five, six, be resolved that the payroll pay period twenty-five, November sixteenth to the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, sixteen cents, be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and seconder, Derek, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Seven point one, point three, payment of November council perdeems. Any questions on that? Hearing done, or read the resolution, four, five, seven, be it resolved that the November two thousand twenty-four council perdeems in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents, be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and seconder, Leanne, seconded by Gary, all in favor, carried. Seven point two, two thousand twenty-five financial plan.
So with this one, I'll just add in, the financial plan development is proceeding well. We're already about, had to maybe two-thirds completed, as far as the expense side, the revenue side, revenue side is also progressing. This year, we're gonna do a little bit different, just based on our strategic plan, because we've had so far, that's currently still being close and developing. There will be the, added this year, three sessions. One is going to be, well, basically three open houses, basically capital plan presentation in open house, a operating budget presentation in open house, and bill rate and special assessment, tax levy presentation in open house. So those are gonna basically be held at the town hall, hour, hour and a half duration, that's still been figured out. Basically, initial presentation about ten, fifteen, maybe twenty minutes, haven't developed those yet, then followed by a Q and A question. And the idea being is that, kind of explain better what we're doing in the actual budget process, as far as these three areas, give a bit of educational, as far as what we, how it's actually done, and then basically answer questions of whoever wants to ask. The Q and A session will be the usual format, just basically, you've got one minute to answer a question, we'll respond, just to make sure that people, as many people can be queued up to get those questions done. And yeah, it'll be relatively informal, just the presentation, similar to the, our financial plan, public hearing that we do.
That's, excuse me, Trevor, that's lined up for the second week of February, you see, then, those three meetings?
Those three meetings, just, some people have different interests in different areas, and if you did it all at once, it'd be an awful long meeting, so, kind of like, hour, hour and a half, focused on a good discussion, and then takeaway, and then we do the next one, the next part.
Right.
Spread them a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And of course, any input, feedback, we'll incorporate to and discuss and evaluate.
Okay, thanks.
Are we gonna, excuse me, are we gonna advertise those?
Absolutely. Yeah, they'll be on the website, they'll be on the notice board, the website, we'll put them on Facebook as well, we'll put them in the start times, so basically, I think that's pretty good electronic, and then of course, word of mouth, talk to folks, let them know what's coming, and hope they'll have a good show up.
That sounds good, to me.
Any other questions on the financial plan?
No, I don't hear.
I'll read the resolution, four, five, eight, be it resolved that the two thousand twenty-five financial plan development information item, December third, two thousand twenty-four, be accepted as presented. Seconded by Gary, Ken moved it, Gary second, all in favor, carried. Number eight point one, AMM convention. Information item. Along with that, booklet containing all the resolutions that were forwarded on. What was the number, thirty-seven resolutions, or thirty?
We had a forty-one.
Forty-one?
Municipal issues, thirty-seven, sorry, forty-one were total, thirty-seven municipal issues, four policy issues. They actually, there was a lot of discussion this year, so it was actually a lot of good dialogue back and forth, and people take regional concerns here, regional concerns there. Basically, we had one, two, three, four, five resolutions were not passed, they were defeated, everything else was passed, and just the resolutions being that there was a little bit more on the defeated side, I just included in the information item. The meeting also involved the elections of the senior executive for the AMM, and that was the new president, Kathy Valentino, she spoke very well during the session, and then we also had, let's see here, Brad Stewart with the Reeve, he's been in that position for quite a while, he actually, he's, he's got the upper contacts, and you can just see, you can just see the professionalism, and you can tell this person, he knows what he's doing, and he's very solid in his knowledge, and then we had another new individual, who had a hockey tape metaphor, which is kind of interesting, but I'll get into it, so, anyway, he was also elected, those two individuals were the VPs that were elected in the position, there's always two for each electoral cycle. And the last part was, we met with the senior officers of the RCMP from Manitoba, and there's, we found out that there's actually, talked about the COPP program, which we've just set up, that's basically, we haven't set up, but basically, just received their recognition, their, their, their group applications that are recently approved, and they have, last count, fourteen, might be fifteen members now, and at this stage, the RCMP were, kind of, spent some time telling what we're doing, what we've done, how that's progressing, and you could just see with body language, the RCMP, people like, whoa, this is actually something, they were actually engaged, asking questions, it was quite a good discussion, and they advised us that they have a property management grant fund, seized property management grant funding, you can do a one-time application, and they encouraged us to do an application for all of the COPP equipment, that's gonna range, I haven't got a list from Candace yet, but it could range from uniforms, tuques, coats, walkie-talkies, flashers, squawkers, light flash, like for the cars, extra signage, and some other items too, so, we're exploring that, we'll do an initial application to them, and then do a follow-up in the fall, the falls, when they accept the formal applications, but the, they were definitely saying, encourage us to do it, both the actual senior officers and their staff.
Good. Was there a lot of talk in general about, like, the crime drug problem in the province, was that kind of heard lots there? In general, at the?
The, no hard ones, resolutions, there was resolutions.
Towards that?
Included that, and they are included too, so, yeah, and all those resolutions that had claimed, included that, that type of area, was incorporating those resolutions, those were all passed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, there's definitely discussion there, and actually, further in the agenda, there's another item that we, basically, would be addressed that a bit more specifically or directly.
Okay, thanks.
And also, there was a resolution number thirty-seven, that we had sponsored with the Townes-Fournier, remember, regarding the venue?
Mm-hmm.
And it did pass, that fall convention will be in Brandon.
It did pass, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And the spring one will be in Winnipeg, and that's, because with it, that way, we'd be able to get all the ministers attending the one in Winnipeg, as compared to one in Brandon, the Brandon one, there'd be a lot bigger area, whatever, for the displays and whatnot.
So the way it's set up now, the fall conference has always been in Winnipeg, is that correct? It's not gonna flip-flop anymore?
Correct. They, they have contracts already in Winnipeg for the spring one coming up, so they can't break those contracts.
Oh, but after that, then?
So after that, it'll, it'll basically go Brandon for the spring, and then the November one.
Winter, fall, will be Winnipeg, always, okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And I believe they said there was over seven hundred registered.
Oh, definitely.
For the convention itself.
Oh, for the delegates, yeah.
Delegates, yeah.
Yeah.
And there was, also at the AMM, there was breakout sessions, and I attended the one for doctor recruitment, and also, where else did I go?
I can't recall.
That's on the tip of my tongue, Lord. Anyway, with the doctor recruitment, what I had learned there, that Manitoba, as far as all the provinces go, we're number one for forest shortages for, in the healthcare service, for nurses, doctors, and whatnot, and also with the RCMP, we're the province with the biggest shortage for the book departments.
Any idea why?
No, they never, they never really did say why, just that, how long would it take to improve that, is difficult, because of the number of people that are either moving on to different provinces with the same job, or people that are retiring, so whether they'd be, be able to bring up enough, it's gonna, it's gonna take time. And then also met with, same thing with the doctor recruitment, there was three lady doctors there, and the main focus that they were talking about is what attracts them to the rural, rural settings, whether it be the extra money, or, but it pretty well boiled down to their families, is there services for their children, schools, et cetera, et cetera, and that's, that was the main thing, and, and then too, but, they'd really like the rural setting, so that's what made them go there, as compared to the city life, and some of the doctors were actually originally from the city, but once they got out and, and did some practicing, whatever, they ended up staying, so, that was a good plus. And of course, if they come single and find a farmer to marry, then that changes everything too. And that's about it on the AMM, Trevor, you ready for that?
Yeah.
I'll read the resolution, four, five, nine, be it resolved that association of Manitoba municipalities follow two thousand twenty-four convention information item be accepted as presented. Mover, Derek and Leanne, all in favor, carried. Eight point two, two thousand twenty-five to twenty-eight strategic plan.
So the strategic planning session, council started that, we had, we've been doing individual council deliberations, as far as what they thought, priorities, projects, concerns, and then we had our two-day strategic planning session. I won't get into the detail of it, because it's pretty well laid out in the actual information item, but there's like, one thing I'd like to bring forward, in that we are going to have a date to be determined, but it will be at the town hall. Council will host a strategic planning town hall presentation and meeting during December, that may change, but basically, we're thinking during December, the development took a little bit longer, but our, our last tentative date was in December, in which it will present the project strategies, milestones, and targets being considered by council to residents for input and feedback. So what we're gonna do is basically, do some speaking, probably categorize our actual projects, similar to what we talked about with the financial plan development, twenty minutes speaking, and then basically, Q and A, let people ask questions and say, hey, what about this project, or maybe there's something we didn't think about, which is possible, and basically, take the input and discussion from that back, but also share with individuals. These are kind of the categories we're doing, this is what we see the focus of priorities on, and anybody who wants to see what we're considering for strategic plan, be a good presentation for that, and we have a good show up, it'll be posted on our website, it'll be on Facebook, not the start times, but basically, I think that's pretty good advertising, there's loads too, and of course, word of mouth, Facebook's got pretty good traffic as well, so, and of course, bulletin boards too, always, for both of those that, and the financial plan.
On that date, yeah, we've gotta determine that.
Yeah, still determined.
Still, yeah. Working on the date.
Yeah, we, a little bit more work to do with the work, so, we're hoping still for December, but it might roll into January.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm gonna read the resolution, then, four, six, zero, be it resolved that the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-eight strategic plan development information item, December third, two thousand twenty-four, be accepted as presented. Mover and seconder, please, Gary, seconded by Ken, all in favor, carried. Eight point three, G four, G eight meeting.
So, during the last meeting of the G four, G eight, the G four members, and they, they were talking about this for quite a while, having a schedule, a regular schedule, everybody kind of follows, so there's no, who's gonna do the next meeting, as far as who's gonna be hosting, so, they came to an agreement, and Minnetonahs-Bozeman municipality was elected as being the one for the January meetings, so, being the host, we can actually, basically, set the topics, of course, if there's suggestions further from other municipalities, we'll incorporate those too, or discuss, but basically, the initial date to be determined, what we've got here right now, January fourteenth, at this time set, we're looking for a agenda of call to order, and then a G four member harm reduction strategy discussion. Now, the purpose for this is, we've had a few municipality meetings with different government officials, we've had some closed meetings, kind of a town hall thing, but without the public present, and the thought is basically, it's time to have an actual town hall meeting to discuss this, where all municipalities can sit, share their ideas that they bring forward, share their initiatives as much as they're able, talking about that, but then having a Q and A session in the actual town halls, so people in the public can actually listen to what the councils have to say, or for councils, but also participate in saying, hey, during the first hour, hour and a half, or whatever, it's gonna be about an hour, you guys discussed this, can we get more clarification of what this, or what this is, or what this would entail, or specific questions? So it's going to be public, the whole portion, we'll start off with the G four members, councils, discussing, and we'll figure out that agenda a little bit more, if we get approval for this agenda at this date, and then, as they go through and discuss, once that first part gets done, it'll be open floor, where actually, the public can go in and actually ask questions, and the question is basically, standard format, one minute to ask your question, and then we answer it, if people are able to provide questions in writing in advance, that might be helpful, because of the fact that you might get a more thought-out, or well-configured answer, but they could be a straight question in there, if questions can't be answered, we'll take them as takeaways, and that council or council member that can be most able to answer that, we'll reach out that individual and try to get an answer back, so we can put it on the actual minutes of meeting hours. So right now, we have the schedule for January fourteenth, six P M, at the Minnetonahs Town Hall, and I think this will be, we're proposing that this be the first open harm reduction meeting, and also, citizens on patrol, you're not gonna be serving dinner at this meeting. The idea is that we put a lot of money into the catering, and that's great, this one's gonna be, have dinner before you come in, and the money that we would normally spend on dinner, we are going to donate to the COPP program, to basically help them operate as far as their fuel, as far as their operating costs, along those lines there too, so, the first part of these meetings are typically, let's have dinner, we're not gonna have dinner, we're just gonna arrive and get down to business, and the money that we save on catering, it's gonna go straight towards the COPP.
Gary, was Candace gonna be there, in case there's any questions, just directly related to COPP Minnetonahs?
I am going.
Or is that, yeah, still?
I'd like to have her come in, because she is actually the chair, well, she's the senior leader, I'm not sure what the title is, but on COPP, they've got a Minnetonahs leader, they've got a Bozeman leader, they have a treasurer, they have Candace, also, we have proposed, and they have agreed, it was actually more of a discussion, we'll have a council member, that's gonna be attending as far as that group as well, and that way, we can coordinate better, and incorporate COPP activities into our announcements, similar to what we do with the other committees that we're on, and yeah, I'd like to have Candace there to accept the check.
Great.
And also, if she's able, I'm not sure what her schedule is, if she's able to actually listen to what's going on in the meeting too, that'd be great to have her at the very beginning to the end, but the check will be presented to her at the end of the, of the, the actual meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the proposal?
I guess same situation for advertising, being the public's gonna be invited for this, that they will be notified, Facebook, all the?
Facebook, website, we'll put up signs. That's currently what we have planned, so, and then of course, word of mouth, hopefully, I think you'll get a good turnout with those, with those platforms, we could do more, but we have to look into cost, if we're doing flyers, also, the post office does need deliveries still, so.
That's right.
There's no point putting flyers in boxes, if you're not gonna go in boxes, so.
Word of mouth discussion like that would go a long ways with these topics, I think.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Any other questions on it? I'm gonna read the resolution, four, six, one, be it resolved that the January two thousand twenty-four G four meeting approval item be accepted and approved as presented. Mover and seconder, Derek, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Number nine, bylaws and policies, nine point one, snow ridging by law.
This bylaw's for first reading, there are some updates that we've done in it, the biggest thing, though, is that this bylaw's referring to our rates, or sorry, our fees, charges, and fines by law, and just because it's basically a group, I'll jump a little bit ahead in the discussion, currently, we have a whole bunch of bylaws that have different rates, fees, fines, penalties, and along those lines, spread across bylaws, and the problem we've got is, a lot of these have not been looked at or updated for years, and a lot of these rates and fees don't even cover even a portion, or fully a small portion of the actual cost of providing these rates, these actual services, so, what we're doing as a group, and there's more bylaws coming that'll incorporate this as well, is, the rates, fees, and charges, we're taking them out of the actual individual bylaws, and putting them into one centralized fees, charges, and fines by law, that way, council can review on an annual basis, one bylaw, and if there's like, an inflationary increase, just for example, of say, two percent, or three percent, or whatever it is, we can just bump up our rates of fees by one, two, three percent, depending on whatever council's direction is, and that way, we only have to do three readings, and approval of one bylaw, rather than three readings and an approval of every single bylaw that happens to have a dollar mount on it, so this way, these bylaws are coming in, we're updating them to reflect our current situation, I mean, right now, we have some bylaws where horses have the right of way over cars, I think we could probably let that one go, but, if a horse does come through town, well, of course, get a courtesy, but the point is, is, we'll update them as far as by tuning and tweaking them as we go, but we'll also have to really refer to our centralized rate, fee, and bylaw, because the fact that, when we do our updates, it'll let us more reflect in our rates and fees, what the actual cost of the actual programs are, therefore, we're not, if we're taking losses, or not to losses, and for ones where we can make, at least break even to cover the services, then we can do that as well, but on a regular basis review. So, snow ridging, it's pretty much the same bylaw, little bit revision, a lot of formatting, and just basically, referring to the bylaw.
In the snow ridging, well, I'd like something, if a farmer has a, say, fall rye, that's starting to come back now, guys are saying that, it's their responsibility to get ahold of us and say, no ridging on that particular piece of property.
What is that, fall rye?
Or any of those crops that are winter crops.
Oh, which crops?
Yeah, I think it's the farmer's responsibility to get ahold of us, and not us have to check with the farmers, 'cause, yeah, it just doesn't make sense the other way around, does it?
I'll make a change, so, first reading is just a table it?
Right. No, and just seeing that, I wanted to mention it now, because that come to mind when I saw some of this bylaw here. Yeah, would be fall rye, any of the hay crops, any of that type of stuff, that could winter kill. Yeah, this is just first reading.
This is just first reading, so.
So we bring this forward for a second reading, I'll incorporate that word, and then we can fine tune it, basically, how it reads.
Good, thanks.
Anything else to add to this bylaw? Then I'll read the resolution, four, six, two, be it resolved that bylaw zero, nine, two thousand twenty-four, being a bylaw regarding snow ridging, be given first reading. Mover and seconder, please, Gary, seconded by Leanne, all in favor, carried. Nine point two, bylaw ten, two thousand twenty-four, business license bylaw.
This bylaw is pretty similar to the previous bylaw, the only difference is, it has referenced the canvassers, kettle operators, and breeders, basically, the bylaw, it's pretty self-explanatory as far as that, so for first reading, is there any questions as far as how's that, how that's been written?
I think I'm good for first reading, as it stands now, and if something comes up, we can incorporate and talk.
Any other concerns? Then I'll read the resolution, four, six, three, be it resolved that bylaw ten, two thousand twenty-four, being a bylaw regarding business licenses, be given first reading. Mover and seconder, please, Derek, seconded by? Move it in the second or please, Derek seconded by Gary, all in favor, carried. Nine point three, bylaw eleven, aggregate transportation by law.
This bylaw's got to do with powers of heavy aggregate on municipal roads, or the road that's basically maintained or governed by the municipality. The bylaw already exists as per the previous two bylaws we talked about. Basically, we're just cleaning it up, making reference to the actual centralized, consolidated rates, fees and fines by law. And there was some word cleanup, but for first reading, I think it speaks for itself, and then client can review, council can review, and provide feedback for the second reading.
Okay, this one's pretty straightforward, and then with the fees by law, it'll tie in nicely, yeah.
Any other concerns, questions? I'll read the resolution four, six, four. Be it resolved that bylaw eleven, two thousand twenty-four being a bylaw regarding aggregate transportation be given first reading. Move it in the second or please, Ken seconded by Leanne, all in favor, carried. Nine point four, excuse me, fees, charges and fees, or and fines by law.
This is the centralized on fees, charges and fines by law, it's got a, there's a lot there, so I'm not going to give us the detail, but we do have an information item that kind of gives you an idea of what we're trying to do. We also have the actual bylaw, specifically what is currently being proposed for, for first reading. And then we have another version of it, which is basically our one where it says bracketed amount changes illustrated. And in the amount changes illustrated, what we tried to do is let people know what's new, what's old, what's changed, what hasn't changed. So the idea is if you've got green highlighted number, the number just to the left of it is what that number used to be in the individual bylaw that we're bringing the amount in. And then the green number is actually what the number has changed to. So the idea is we've taken a number from the existing bylaw, something that we've already been charging for, we brought in this bylaw to centralize it. And basically, if you see it, the number in green, it's a increase relative with the original one. And again, we haven't raised our rates, fees and fines charges for, for many years, depending what the bylaws, so these, these are, these numbers that we have, the existing bylaws, don't reflect the current cost that's being incurred to providing services along those lines. So the green just indicates where it's been changed. The blue highlighted is basically where services that we have been typically provided for free, these would be more appropriate to be paid for via user fees, rather than by mill rate revenue, which is basically where you've got every single person, fixed income or non-fixed income, paying for services that basically they, they don't have any way of benefiting from directly at all, it's only a small group of individuals or a smaller segment of the population that actually benefits from that. So those would be more, more equitable, would be a good way of putting it, to have it where those users of those services pay for that. So the blue one is basically we're charging for, for services that typically we're not charging for, just giving to everybody. And then the yellow highlighting is just indicating a few remaining items where we changed how the actual rates, fees and fines are being charged, are being applied. So we've got some where seniors or nonprofit groups get their no charge at all, we have some where basically there's discounts, we have some where basically it says annually versus one time. So yellow just indicates a change in how the actual rates, fees are applied relative to the historical approach that we've been using. So yeah, those are three documents, the information item, overviewing, the actual proposed by law, then the one with the highlighted changes and additions.
Questions?
I got a couple. Page eighty-five. Under legislative. Information applications, document provision. I'm just wondering, it says the fee is going to be estimated actual cost plus ten dollars. Is that supposed to be actual cost plus ten dollars instead of estimated?
Let me find that, because you have the whole package, I'm just pulling it online, so I just dug that page.
Okay.
Estimated actual cost plus ten dollars.
Yeah.
So this is the information application document provision, freedom of information and protection of privacy.
Yeah.
Sent via registered mail. So at this stage, let's say someone wants forty page package, but we don't know how many documents it's going to be in advance of that. So what we do is we actually say to the individual, per the existing F O I P legislation, there's going to be a cost for actually producing this information, so we say, we can provide this, but it's going to cost this much, and the F O I P actually has that government form that they actually fill out. The person that then makes the payment, we take the payment in advance, we then actually do the actual work, and then we actually charge up what it is, and if they overpaid, we give a refund, if they underpaid, we charge additional for that difference there. So we're actually quoting the price, it's basically estimated, but it becomes actual. So that wording might be, we can maybe refine that wording to reflect that.
Okay.
But the application is as per the current freedom of information and protection of privacy legislation.
Yeah, it might be good to make it a little bit more clear what's happening there. And then the next page, eighty-six. I just thought for the benefit of those who were not part of all of our discussions on this bylaw, where it talks about livestock permits, class one and class two, but doesn't say what those classes are, that's going to be coming out in another bylaw, right?
Exactly.
Correct, yeah. Okay, and then page eighty-eight. For the breeder license. When you get your first permit, it's two hundred dollars, and if you get it renewed, it's two hundred and fifty. Is that correct?
That's currently what we have in the existing bylaw. So at this stage, I'm going to circle back on that one, because we have found a few errors in prior bylaws. So let me take that as a takeaway, we'll look into it, and if these be revised, we'll do it in our second reading.
Okay. And then one more, page ninety-nine. We're talking about fire, rescue, accident services. Fire response out municipality. The one above it is outside, so I'm assuming that's what it's supposed to say, is outside the municipality?
You'll, there'll be on your bottom, right, there's a page X of X, can you tell me what that page is so I can find?
Ninety-nine.
So page seven, ten.
Seven, ten.
Yeah, seven, ten, okay. One second, I'm just navigating there. So it's towards the top, or?
Yep, towards the top, fire, rescue, accident services.
So fire, rescue, accident services, these are all either Manitoba Public Insurance rates?
Yeah, so the fourth one down, I think it's just a typo.
Okay.
Fire response out municipality.
Oh, it should be outside.
Outside, oh, outside, thank you, yeah.
Yeah. That's all I had on that one.
Are there any other questions or concerns for clarity? If none, I'll read the resolution, this resolution is, has two parts to it. Resolution four, six, five. Be it resolved that the bylaw zero eight two thousand twenty-four fees, charges and fines by law information item be accepted as presented. Be it resolved that bylaw zero eight two thousand twenty-four being a bylaw regarding fees, charges and fines be given first reading. Move it in the second or please, Gary seconded by Leanne, all in favor, carried. Number ten, announcements. Were there any committee meetings since their last meeting that anyone attended?
I had nothing, Larry, since last meeting.
This Bozeman skating rink, we've had quite a few, quite a few meetings and fundraising ideas, things going on. There's issues with the, the hot water tank in the Zamboni room, so we're kind of trying to reach out now to other, like, different farmers and places like that, that maybe we can get, you know, some extra donations than the normal. So because it, we got quoted, I think it's seventy-eight hundred dollars for the propane, we have to hit a propane one, because it's suggested that not to go electrical, because it won't heat fast enough. So for that reason, it's going to cost a lot. Well, in plenty, he's going to donate the labor part of it to install it. So there's going to be letters and stuff going around to the different businesses and stuff like that. And yeah, we have a really good, a lot of people this year helping out, and it's really nice, because we've been on that committee for quite a while, and I don't think I've ever seen such an active group this year, and a lot of extras from even Swan Valley West Side, and yeah, it's, it's really good, it's nice to see.
Do they have an existing propane tank there now?
It's a propane, there's a propane tank, but the heater itself is done.
Okay, no, I was just asking if, if switching over to, to the propane heater, if they needed to buy a new tank or not, I was just wondering if there's one?
It's somewhere right now, that wasn't in, you know, in the quotes that we got anyway, so, yeah. But yeah, of course, when we get into stuff like that, there's a lot of extra, like, it hasn't been looked at in that room for quite a few years right now, so it's been, funds have been pretty low and stuff, so, anyway, got all the L E D lightings now installed inside the waiting room. It's, it looks really nice, yeah, and the Community Foundation, of course, is, that's part of their grant, so, yeah, yeah, it looks really good, and they're having, they're going to have the, I think December twentieth, tentatively, is going to be the night of the sleigh.
The light, you're going to do the, the lighting?
Yeah, we're, we're going back to that, I think, so we're, yeah, trying to get it going again, so it's going to be exciting for the kids, because they're going to do like Christmas lights in the arena, like on the ice surface, and yeah, it'll be good. Kids are looking forward to it, so, yeah. Other than that, Larry and I had gone to the announcement for the G I S province that morning. Other than that, that was pretty, that's all I have, yeah.
Derek?
I don't have one, I have a meeting tomorrow, but nothing up till now.
Okay. As far as the airport commission, whatever, is there any, any talk with having to increase with the amount of snow or whatever that we might be getting this winter for, for the extra plowing effort to keep the airport clean?
I have some meeting I'm going to.
Okay, it's happening tomorrow, whatever. And there's still, still a real shortage of ambulance drivers, so are we still getting like four or five flights sometimes a day through that airport?
I hear them.
Yeah, I hear quite a few go over my, or close to my place, quite frequent.
Yeah, and on the trip to Dauphin today, I seen one ambulance that was on the highway, but other than that, mostly all clean. Gail?
Nothing for me right now, just a few emails from the vet board, but there's nothing. We've got a vote coming up for, we, or increases for twenty twenty-five for large animals and stuff, but it hasn't been done yet, so I don't know what the scoop is on how long we're going to last to call meetings, so we can get to it very quick. That was it for me.
Yeah, yeah, we're really fortunate, because some communities are losing their, their, vet clinics and places, so they're like really scrambling to find somebody to come in and replace. Ken?
I don't have anything, unless you want to give an update on parking for the handy van.
Oh, yeah, Trevor?
Yeah, so the handy van, that's been a challenge. So our handy van is, is manufactured out of country, and it did not have a block heater, and basically in Manitoba, that doesn't really make sense, even though you kind of park it indoors both the times. So that's caused some problems in the cold weather, and with the purchase of our fire truck, the handy van lost its parking spot. Also, the hoist slip doesn't work very well in cold weather, so we were exploring multiple options on the handy van. Finally, the shop, they have a bay, and we've been discussing with them, we've got a pretty much, I think it's ninety-five, ninety-eight percentage certainty that we can actually rent a spot from them on a month-to-month basis for handy van parking. We're just looking into an insurance thing, just to make sure insurance coverage is for the shop in case it burns down, our handy van can be replaced. Basically, we're just waiting for that last piece of information, and if it comes in satisfactorily, then we would park the handy van at the shop, and probably have like one key where the driver has a key to the vehicle as well as the security code, that person does the driving, they give it to the next person, it's only going to be one key, just passed a person to person, and that way we'll be able to maintain that service in cold weather, and we won't have it where anything's freezing up, or not able to start, or not have to let it run for twenty minutes before it actually can be operational. So we're hoping to have that at least verbally finalized this week, and if we get verbal, we'll do a contract for that as well, just have like a month-to-monthly agreement to get us to the winter.
So that problem should be solved for now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's nice to hear.
Yeah.
And as far as myself, oh, getting back to the A M M, the premier made an announcement, but I can't remember the exact dollar, it's so many million dollars, but it's for each municipality and it's per capita.
Yeah, we're looking into it.
To, and then we can do as we please with the money, like go to certain projects or whatever.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, look forward to that, but.
That's for twenty twenty-five, or coming up for the next?
Coming up for two thousand twenty-five, yeah. I think, didn't he mention that it to be coming out in January, beginning of January?
I believe so. We, the goal was to get caught up in what it paid, because last week was only two days long. So basically, we'll be looking at that and doing some inquiries. So the grant was announced, the dollars are significant, but I don't have any, any details as of yet, but I do believe it was beginning of the year or close to, but which means that we can actually start utilizing those funds earlier versus waiting, say, the fall or the summer, so.
Good news.
Yeah, and December is, Christmas is us approaching, but we've still got lots of meetings and work not to attend, and it's getting jam packed, it's brought every day, there's something coming up on there.
Calendar's pretty full, getting.
Yes, so other than that, I don't have anything else for announcements. All right, number eleven, to move into camera. Resolution four, six, six. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one, five, two, three of municipal act, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employees' legal land. Pursuant to section eighty-three, one D, council member shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting close to the public under subsection one, five, two, three, until a matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Further to section ninety-four, one H, council member becomes disqualified for breach in the requirement of confidentiality under class eighty-three, one D. I need a mover and a second or to go into camera. Leanne and Gail, all in favor, on the time being?
Six, four, nine. Yeah, six, four, nine.
And after, after we come out of camera there, that'll be the end for the meeting, and we'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Resolution to come out of camera, four, six, seven. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one, five, two, four of municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at?
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five. Move by. Gary seconded by. Ken, all in favor, carried. Ken, all in favor, carried. Resolution 468 to, for adjournment, move by, Leanne, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. And the time is?
Time is 8:56.
8:56.
Meeting adjourned.